Took me a while to figure out what was going on there. I thought we would have to look at it.
Well, you know, you we talked about this years ago about containers, so this is really concerning or issue or desire? I don't know which one to call.
Yeah, you're actually thirty seconds early.
I just came back from Providence.
It's more spicy than the time that pretty used to sound.
Yeah, I'll say so.
We don't walk here every night at seven?
Okay, this is the Tuesday, June tenth, twenty twenty-five, uh, meeting of the Town of South Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, rise to the state of pledge of allegiance. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so, uh, just remind everybody to silence your cell phones, which I'm gonna have to do. Okay, and, uh, we have a public hearing, I'll ask the secretary to read the notice.
Notice is hereby given that there will be a public hearing on Tuesday, June tenth, twenty twenty-five at seven P M. In the Madden Room of the South Windsor Town Hall to consider the following. Application twenty-five dash twenty P, Hagen-Huguen Farms temporary and conditional permit request for two-year temporary and conditional permit for two shipping storage containers eight foot by twenty foot for hay storage along access drive on property located at three seventy-five Ry Street, residential, rural residential and industrial zone. Application twenty-five dash twenty-two P, K and H European Motorsports LLC, request for special exception to table four point one point one A to allow for a car dealership license to sell used vehicles limited to four on property located at five twenty-four Sullivan Ave., Unit Two, Industrial Zone. And number three, application twenty-five dash twenty-five P, Northeast Auto Body LLC, request for special exception to table four point one point one A to allow for a car dealership license to sell used automobiles limited to four on property located at one oh five Edwin Road, Unit Sixteen, Industrial Zone. Copies of these applications are on file in the office of the town clerk and the planning department and online at south windsor dash C T dot gov slash planning. At this hearing, interested persons may be heard and written comments for the public will be received by mail or email. Persons who may require an accommodation can contact staff eight six zero six four four two five one one, extension two three two nine. Stephen Wagner, Chair, Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you. So, is there someone here from, uh, Hagen-Huguen Farms? So, um, on the assumption that they may be coming late, um, I think we'll just reorder the public hearings. We'll move on to application twenty-five twenty-two P, K and H European Motorsports. And is there someone here from them?
Yep.
So let me explain how we do this. First of all, you'll be given the opportunity to present your application. Uh, we won't be asking questions at that time. Um, then we, uh, ask for comments from the staff. And when that's done, we ask for comments from the public. If there's anyone from the public who wants to speak. And finally, we let the commissioners, uh, comment and or ask questions. So that would be the point at which we'll start asking you questions.
All right. Well, my name is Kashram Zavi. Um, I'm trying to get the application for a dealer's license, even though I am just doing general repair, just for the fact that I do hire people in case we are slow. I want to be able to buy one or two cars to be able to fix themselves, to be able to keep the payroll going, keep the expenses going. Um, I've been in this business twenty-four years, but in East Windsor, I work for somebody. So I decided just to leave there after ten and a half years, open up my own shop. I like South Windsor. We had a lot of people in South Windsor, a lot of the businesses I know. And wanted to decide to open up here instead of the East Windsor, get away from all the car community and do a new area, a new, uh, new people that I can.
Um, is that all I have to say right now?
As of right now, yeah, I mean.
Okay, great. No problem. Uh, well, that's for our town planner or system planner to speak.
Okay, so, uh, this is a request for special exception to table four point one point one A to allow for a car dealership license to sell used automobiles limited to four on property located at five twenty-four Sullivan Ave., Unit Two, Industrial Zone. Uh, the applicant has provided a narrative as well as a copy of the existing site plan. This application is subject to the review criteria of section eight point four B. Um, I won't go through all of them, but, um, at this point, I'm sure you guys are familiar with special exception criteria. So as stated in the applicant's narrative, uh, and from his presentation here, they are looking to apply for a used car dealer license to the DMV. Our regulations only allow for a maximum of four cars off of the sale of the entire site. So if any other business here was to apply for used car dealer license, they would all have to comply with this restriction, and that would be enforced by the property owner. This license allows businesses to purchase and sell used vehicles at the auction. Uh, so, you know, previously, we've had other applications like this come forward, and I've asked before, and I'll ask again now. Uh, one thing I'd want to know is how the cars will be transported to and from the auction, if they're gonna be using truck and trailer, uh, you know, just how that would be coordinated. So the vehicles associated with the business, they have to be parked in an approved location on site. Um, that was not apparently clear on the site plan, so I'm just recommending that staff works with the applicant to determine suitable location for parking. There were no engineering comments, and if this application is approved, planning staff has no additional comments.
So is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this or ask questions? I'm assuming none, uh, we'll move on to members of the commission. Uh, and at this stage, applicant or alternates and, uh, regular members can participate. So we'll start with Commissioner McGankey, uh, Commissioner Kupchunov.
No comment.
I don't have any comments right now.
I just have a question, probably from Michelle. This application and the the one after it are for exactly the same thing, is there any relationship? Or is it just coincidental?
Yeah.
Just coincidental?
It's a very typical, as we know, application, there are a lot of car people that get. Yep, no, just coincidence, timing.
We're super close to the auctions, I mean, they're all at East Windsor, so, you know.
Yeah.
And like he's saying, I mean, it's just a way for him to generate a little extra cash, so, yeah, it's coincidence.
Yeah, I I don't have any questions.
I'll ask Justin's questions. Um, how will the cars be transported to your facility?
I will be using a transport truck. I have a friend of, for the last dealer I worked for, he had a transport truck, they will be transporting whatever I buy.
Like one at a time?
No, he has a pretty big truck, he has a ten, ten pound truck, so it can fit whatever cars I decide to buy yet.
Okay, okay. You need to have the right turning in and turning out, no issues with Sullivan, okay, okay. Uh, other than that, I mean, I know we have, um, seen these before. Um, I'm trying to figure out where this is on the map, I know it's five twenty-four.
Right next to R and L Transport.
So R and L is here?
Yeah.
Okay.
R and L and then United Delivery and FedEx is just like stone spoken.
All right, very good. Any issues with the site as it is now?
Not that I, no, not that I could see, I mean, I guess I am a little, like, so, I mean, moving a transport truck in there, you think you got the radius for that?
The guy, when we talked to him, he actually came himself to tell me yes or no. If not, I have another guy with a flatbed, we'll do one at a time. So whatever is more convenient, that makes sense, that's what I'll do.
Just don't want to block the road.
That's all I have.
Mr. Foley.
Um, as far as the sale of the vehicles, you're gonna be selling these back at the auction?
To, to the public.
To the public.
I need to order back through, uh, ACV, which is the auction. I have no intent to really want to sell cars, it's just the dealer's license just gives me a blanket that I can't do that if I'm slow. Because I was in the car business for the past twenty-four years, I have no interest in it. I like general repairs. But if times are slow, I have employees that need to get paid, at least I can buy one or two, fix it, sell it, whether through auction, through, uh, retail, that at least generates some money to keep the business afloat.
And now, I was out at your site today, um, you're in unit number two, the vehicles, how many parking spaces come with your unit, as far as when?
I have from, uh, the beginning of the building, when you first pull in, Joel the plumber was, that whole section. I've been given twenty to twenty-five spaces, I can use them, two up front.
So that motorcycle repair?
That's his, that has nothing to do with me, all the, where all the cars were, up to the trailers, I have all that. That is all mine. And then two right in front, where my sign is for the street.
So, but you'll, so I'm, one of the things, I just want to make sure that we never see a car on the front lawn of that property, so, never.
Mr. McCarty?
No.
Mr. Kevin Yarrow?
No comment.
Mr. Karashi? And I have no other questions. Uh, so that will, any other reason to keep the public hearing open? Close the public hearing at, uh, seven twenty, okay?
Seven ten.
Seven ten.
And, uh, we will act on this later. We got all the public hearings first, and then we'll come back and decide what to act on.
Thank you.
So, uh, somebody came in, uh, was that from Hagen-Huguen Farms or you? Okay.
I just, I'm just, uh, witnessing, or like sitting in.
No.
No, you're not from.
Oh, okay. Um, and we'll move on to application twenty-five twenty-five P, Northeast Auto Body LLC.
Good evening, my name is Jose Figaro, and, um, I currently hold the, uh, repair license on one oh five Edwin Road, uh, Bay sixteen. And, um, I've been there for two years and a half. And sometimes it gets a little rough on, uh, repair, uh, that I do, you know, with the customers. So I'm requesting a dealer as well, um, for downtime, um, the property. Been there for two and a half years, everything is how it's supposed to be on licensing, insurance, or time for, you know, second step.
Okay, um. How was that?
So, uh, this is a request for special exception, the table four point one point one A to allow for a car dealership license to sell used automobiles limited to four on property located at one oh five Hibbin Road, Unit Sixteen, Industrial Zone. Um, yeah, really, same, same deal as the last one. So the applicant has provided us a narrative and a copy of the existing site plan. Um, this applicant has shown us, uh, approximately where the cars would be parked on site. Um, so the application is subject to the special exception, uh, review criteria of section eight point four B, which I will not go into. Um, and, yeah, I mean, it's, it's really the same, same thing. So, you know, they can have four on site, um, that's for the whole site, there's a lot of auto, auto uses out there, so that's something that would be enforced by the property owner, and the whole site is only allowed to have up to four cars off for sale at any one time. Um, again, yeah, I would just want to know, you know, if they're gonna be using flatbed, truck, trailer, you know, to get cars to and from the auction, if that's even their intent. Uh, there's a little bit more room out here on this site, so. And, yeah, I mean, everything that's shown on the site plan, you know, the vehicles associated with the business have to be parked in the approved location on site, as indicated. So, uh, with that all being said, you know, there are no engineering comments, and if the application is approved, then planning staff has no additional comments.
Okay, are there any members of the public who wish to comment on this application?
Yeah, so my name is Robert Star, I'm a conservator.
Please come up here.
I'm a conservator for Doris Bergoff.
Excuse me, uh, come up to the podium, please. You can have a seat, yeah.
I can have a seat.
But don't throw fire.
Down against the wall right there.
That's good, if you want to.
My name is Robert Starr, and I'm a conservator for Doris Bergoff, who owned a piece of property joining the, the application. Some family members thought I should come here to find out exactly what's going on. This is my first hearing, so I've never been to a zoning here before, so. Uh, one, the main question they had was, when you say four automobiles, you have four automobiles a day, four automobiles a week, or?
It's.
How many can I say? What does four, does four vehicles mean? They can only display four vehicles at a time, or?
Exactly.
Yeah, it's, right, four cars off of a sale at any one time. Yep.
And that's, that was my question, everybody has asked me, I, I didn't know what to answer. We had no objection to it.
Thank you, Mr. Farm.
Thank you, how to being.
Any other members of the public? And we'll talk to commissioners, uh, Mr. Karashi.
I have no questions or comments.
I have no questions or comments.
Mr. Kevin Yarrow, Commissioner Terry.
No questions.
Mr. Foley. Mr. Dexter.
I, I know Michelle and Justin, we always look at these site plans when we have an application or, you know, of any sort, and we have that opportunity to clean up and do things. I mean, are all these vehicles somebodies and come and go, or are they abandoned?
No, 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 there's no, um, the owner of the property is, it's, it's very rough on cars that stay still.
Stick around, okay.
Stick around and, um, he'll have them towed if necessary.
He can't even see a post back there.
It's not there anymore.
Oh, it's not there? This is old? That's odd.
Commissioner Burns?
Yeah, so twice you've made the comment, it's very rough. I'm, I'm trying to understand what that means, is it?
No, like, downtime, I'm paying guys, you know, and payroll, I got guys on payroll that I pay.
Okay.
Payrolls, so, you know, I don't want to send them home, so it gets a little rough. I mean, we still, you know, figure it out, yeah.
Financial business decision, yeah, like, like the previous, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Commissioner McGankey?
No comments.
Mr. Kupchunov? Uh, we did have a question on how you transport the vehicles.
Uh, oh, so, transport it again, if the vehicles are, um, good enough to drive, they provide us with, uh, dealer plates that we can move them around. And or, um, if they're not drivable, um, they get towed.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, uh, in that case, we'll close the public hearing at seven seventeen, and we'll act on this later.
Chairman, I did get ahold of our first applicant, he's racing down here. So he'll be here momentarily, I don't know if I want to suspend the public hearing and act on the other applicants first, or something, but he should be here in the next five minutes.
Say again?
We could act on these two if you want.
Yeah, why don't we act on these two? Although we normally have other regular meeting items. Um, let's go to, just follow the regular meeting, we'll suspend the public hearing, uh, and continue with the regular meeting, which I'm now calling to order. Uh, since we have no, uh, regular members who are not here, uh.
You have no regular members, but you have a vacancy.
That's right, we have a vacancy, and the vacancy should be filled by?
Being filled.
Commissioner Kupchunov.
I mean, you were seated once, don't get to two seedings?
Yeah, she needs another seating, another vote, yeah. All right. Okay, um.
Council gave it once, you do it second, next Monday.
Yeah. So, um, Commissioner Kupchunov is now seated. Public participation, is there anyone from the public? Oh, wait, let's do the minutes for May twenty-seventh. I didn't have any comments, anybody else?
No. Nope.
Motion to approve them, approve them by consensus?
Yes.
Let's do it that way. Anybody from the public who wants to speak on something that's not on the agenda? Okay, um, now we can move on to new business. Um, we'll go to item two, application twenty-five twenty P, oh, I'm sorry. We got the, well, let's act on, um, the two applications we heard, and get back to the others. So, application twenty-five twenty-two P, K and H. Someone care to make a motion, any discussion of that, or? Would care to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve application twenty-five dash twenty-two P, K and H European Motorsports LLC.
We second.
You want to read the conditions?
Send me off the floor.
Standard conditions, are they? Yeah, standard.
Somebody's coming flying through the door, I can hear them.
I second it. Second one? Well, I think just the italic ones.
Yeah, right, there's, there's a few of them.
All right, uh, standard approval modification site plan for application twenty-five dash twenty-two P, K and H European Motorsports LLC. Uh, standard, um, items one through seven, and then number eight, applicant shall work with staff to identify the designated parking spaces on site. Number nine, any cars posted for sale shall be parked on site in designated parking spaces. And number ten, all parking needs must be met on site.
Okay, we do have a second?
Second.
And any other discussion? Hall of favor?
Aye.
Aye, and the opposed? Any abstaining?
There we go.
Motion passes unanimously. So let's move on to application twenty-five twenty-five P, Northeast Auto.
Move to approve application twenty-five dash twenty-five P, uh, standard conditions one through seven, uh, point eight, any cars posted for sale shall be parked on site in designated parking spaces, and point nine, all parking needs must be met on site.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Burns here? And, uh, any discussion? Okay, hall of favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Passes unanimously. Okay, so now, uh, we will, I, I understand the applicant has come in for the first hearing?
Yep.
Okay, um, so we'll go back to resume the public hearing. Uh, we're gonna hear application twenty-five twenty P, and, uh, you can come up here. And since you missed the introduction, basically.
I apologize for that, yeah.
Uh, the way this works is we'll let you present your case, uh, then we'll let the staff comment, uh, then we ask for members of the public if they wish to comment. And then finally, uh, commissioners will, um, each have a turn to speak or ask you a question. So we won't be asking you questions at the beginning, that'll come more to the end of the public hearing. Good?
I submit an application for two shipping containers.
So your name is?
Jonathan Hagen-Huguen, uh, three seventy-five Ry Street.
So you signed, did you have a sign?
Nope, I could just, I'm gonna sign it first.
Yeah.
So I submit an application for two shipping containers to be used for hay storage and just general agricultural use. That's it.
Okay, anything you've done at the site or anything that we need to know?
It's a small family farm, um, we have some small livestock, some plantings, Christmas trees, pumpkins.
So now we'll have, uh.
I'm gonna briefly talk to you. So this is a request for two-year temporary and conditional permit for two shipping containers eight by twenty for hay storage and farm use along an access drive on property three seventy-five RR and Industrial Zone. This request is to resolve a complaint that was filed against the applicant for these shipping containers along Ry Street. Um, just a little background, the commission, um, does not allow shipping containers in residential zones without some kind of permitting, so that's the reason that was not compliant when they showed up there. So, um, zoning, so the structures, they're about a hundred fifty feet from the property line, um, and I, the applicant provided a map kind of showing where they were on the property, and I do have some pictures on the charity momentarily. So when zoning enforcement was initiated, applicant was notified of the violation, I think his original intent was to move them down further into the farm, but, um, for various reasons, they're staying where they are. He proceeded to, um, provide, uh, plant some rubber varieties along the front there, as well as paint the shipping containers. I'm gonna pass you a before and after, and granted, this is over a period of time, so we're taking a little while to resolve this, but I think it's an example of how a shipping container can be on a site and, and, you know, not be quite as impactful. Um, so you can take a look at those, so the screening, uh, the, the plantings have been affected in screening the shipping containers. So the wording of temporary and conditional permit is that the permit may be granted by the commission for a period not to exceed two years, such approval may be given after a public hearing. To the judgment of the commission, the public convenience and welfare will substantially serve. Proper use of neighboring property will not be substantially or permanently injured, and traffic and other hazards are not results from such use. A zoning permit will be required for these structures, a building permit will not be required because there are other two hundreds for feet inside. So the zoning permit would, again, just be assured that it's adoning compliant in their location. Um, if this application is approved, other than applying for that permit, there's no other planning modification request.
Um, back to Commissioner Kupchunov.
No comment.
Mr. Burns?
Is this a commercial farm?
No.
Just a family hobby?
It's a family, family hobby, I have three small children, so I kind of got into it for them, and it's been wanting to be what it is now, yeah. We have some horse, uh, horses, we do do some horse lessons, but we don't, like, advertise commercially and stuff like that, friends of the family, that kind of stuff.
Is there only hay in here, these containers?
Um, one of the containers.
Um, one of the containers only has hay, not container, and then the other one has like some farming equipment, shovels and rigs and-
No chance of it's being so hot in there that there's combustion of hay or, I mean, that-
The containers are vented, they have vents in the four corners, but, uh, no, there's no like gas or-
This is in lieu of a barn, is this in lieu of a barn where you normally would put hay or?
I, I have a barn as well, we have some hay storage where I keep the horses. There's some animals that are close to this, and they just eat a different kind of hay that comes in these big round bales, so that's hard to maneuver, so that's kind of where I land on that location. I just drive the tractor in, put the hay down, and it just keeps it dry from the elements.
And they look much better.
I tried my best to make it nice, I live there, so I want it to look nice too, so, yeah.
Mr. Dexter? Mr. O'Terry?
No.
Mr. Cavanaro?
No comment.
Mr. Quaschi? And, uh, I did drive by, um, I looked at it both, uh, Ry Street where it was hard to see what was going on, and then from the neighboring street, and I just think, uh, it looks like you're doing a good job with the, with the arboritee that you planted there.
Thank you.
Need to fill out a little more, but-
Nobody wants it to be more than me, yeah.
Any reason to keep the public hearing open?
Nope.
Close the public hearing at seven twenty-seven, and, uh, we'll act on this later.
Thank you, would you want me to stay?
You're welcome to stay, you don't have to stay.
I'll stay.
All my papers are on over here. They're organized. So we're now, uh, closing the public hearings and resuming the regular meeting at the same, uh, seating. And we got it. Fast minutes. So, um, we'll go to this application twenty-five twenty-four P, uh, Pega Binder, uh, Bajwa, DBA Bajwa Aesthetics.
Yeah, renewal.
This is deja vu.
Hi.
Oh, yeah.
So my name is Rabu Bajwa, and, um, uh, from twenty Oxford Drive, I'm a resident of South Windsor for thirty-five years, and a practicing physician for thirty-five years now. I'm here to, for requesting a renewal for major home occupation, medical office or medical spa at twenty Oxford Drive, South Windsor.
Counsel now?
Yep, sure, this is an application renewal for a major home occupation permit, previously granted for only two years, um, for a medical office known as Bajwa Aesthetics at twenty Oxford Drive, double A thirty zone. The commission may recall, we had quite a few folks out in the neighborhood two years ago with concerns and whatnot. Um, I'm happy to say that there have been no concerns expressed in my office over the last two years, so, um, this is a request for five years. As indicated, the medical service include botox fillers, skin tightening, micro kneeling machine, uh, the services are provided by a licensed nurse practitioner, the applicant's daughter, and who is the employer that works with the business. Based on, um, the previous request, Monday through Friday, ten AM to six PM, Saturday, ten to three, and you have, uh, two weeks out of eight weeks with one Saturday, so every other month is Saturday. The business is conducted at a single room, an entrance from the driveway, you do have copies of the room and the plot plan. The applicant's responsible in ensuring all medical waste is handled, disposed of in accordance with all ethical regulations, and she had provided us a copy of the contract that she does have. Just a reminder, the commission's reason for approval is home occupation is clearly secondary to the use of the building as a dwelling purpose. Home occupation is compatible with permitted residential uses in the residential district. Charactered dwelling neighborhood are maintained, preserved, and all residents are free from excessive noise, nuisances, terror hazards, offensive orders, and pollutants, and other possible effects of commercial uses being conducted. Um, as expressed, there have been no concerns over the last two years, so, um, we recommend that.
Okay, um, this is not a public hearing, so we don't normally ask for members of the public, uh, as I recall, two years ago, there was some concern about-
Yeah, there was, it was concerning about traffic and, you know, how it would operate for camera.
All right, so let's see, uh, we'll just see, Commissioner Quaschi?
I have a question.
Did you come yet?
Uh, I do have one question, one comment. Over the past two years, um, are you, like, planning on making any changes, or just coming back and, like, nothing has changed, just wanna go forward with five years?
Um, nothing has changed. The space is the same, number of patients are same, and the equipment is same, and the services are same.
Perfect, that's all I wanted to know, and I, and thank you for that. Uh, I guess the comment I had as well, and just remembering how this went two years ago, this was combined with another hotly contested, uh, application item, and I remember we did relocate to another venue, and like, I do apologize if that happened, delaying that process two years ago. Like I said, I, I have no issue with this, and, and we'll be voting in favor of the five-year, uh, temporary conditional permit. Is it temporary conditional?
Medical patient.
Yeah, the, the five-year renewal. Yeah, I mean, I, I would say that nimbyism spans everything from housing all the way down to a little tiny medical office, and it's just my view. I, I didn't have a problem with it, but I'm happy to be voting on it tonight, so thank you.
Commissioner, Commissioner Dari?
So you said, the concerns we did have two years ago, there's-
There's, there have been no, um, nobody's called our office about any problems with the operations of the business at all.
Good, okay, that's it, thanks.
And-
And again, a sign was posted with this renewal, so, you know, if anybody in the neighborhood did have a concern, they could certainly-
Good.
Although-
Commissioner Dexter? Commissioner Pauli?
That's twice tonight, Steve.
I stand.
I looked there and skipped. Commissioner Dexter?
No comments, good to see you back.
Commissioner Bernstein?
Yeah, I, I recall this application from last time, so you're the licensee.
Yes.
But you're not the one providing the services, is it your daughter?
Um, I'm a medical director for that, uh, business. Yes, my daughter, who is, her main practice is in Fort Lauderdale, Florida, but she also comes here two weeks in every, uh, every eight weeks, two weeks here.
And I, I have this recollection, you don't live in the property?
I live.
You do, okay. I thought, I recall something about relocating or going back and forth.
But it's getting, uh, it's getting lifted up now due to crumbling foundation. I won't be living for four months, July, but I live there, yes.
Sorry I brought it up. Uh, no, I, I mean, my feeling is, if Michelle is saying that there has not been any complaints, no incidents, then, uh, I'm good with it, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner McGankey?
No comment.
Commissioner Kachinas?
No comment.
And, uh, I have, well, I noticed you, you don't, uh, post a sign out there, a business sign, not a zoning, uh-
The business sign?
Yeah.
Um, we didn't feel the need because everything is online. We get, um, clients or patients from New York State, from Massachusetts, someone flew from Michigan, so they don't need a sign, but, uh, address is more than enough, so they call, they confirm. So we didn't feel the need, but if there is a need, then I'll put two by two, I was told, on the window, not on the street.
If you don't need it, I wouldn't, if you don't want it, I wouldn't.
Yeah, we're not asking for it.
It may cause more attention.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Yeah. All right, any other comments or discussion, Commissioner Cavanaro?
Thank you, I do have a new question, since you did just bring up the, the crumbling foundation. Is that going to, to halt your medical office business for a couple of months, because it is attached to the home?
Um, so it is going to be whole, but we are trying in the town, if we could sublet, um, few days in October, and few days in August, um, in town, uh, office space, so that's our second option, but it won't be, yes, it'll be on hold.
Okay, just wanna know, thank you.
Okay, any, uh, other comments, all right? Ready for a motion? On the back of the notes.
Uh, move to approve application twenty-five dash twenty-four P, um, does anyone have the-
It's empty. Oh, mine is blank.
Mine is blank, babe. Uh, points one through three are conditional permits, point four, hours, hours of operation Monday through Friday, ten AM through six PM, and one Saturday, from ten AM to three PM. These hours are limited to two weeks out of every eight weeks with only one Saturday included. I see there's a point five, but that is not italicized, shall I read that out loud?
Sure, you go ahead, yeah.
Uh, refuse from the business cannot be disposed of within residential refuse. Adequate arrangements must be made for, this is refuse disposal.
Second.
Any other discussion? Hall of favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Passes unanimously. Now we're ready to move on to application twenty-five twenty P. You can move in for a moment.
You should have a, on the back here, the second item should say the zoning permission.
Move to approve application twenty-five dash twenty P, um, I, there are two points there, uh, do you want me to read them out loud?
Sure.
Uh, point one, the temporary conditional permit will expire on June tenth, twenty twenty-seven, and will have to be renewed at the time if the use is to continue. Point two, a zoning permit is required to renew the temporary structure.
Second.
Okay, hall of favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining, passes unanimously. We'll get on the box, I wanted to-
You have no bonds.
Suggest, I wanted to suggest that we add an item to the agenda to deal with the letter that the mayor had proposed. We have a consensus to do that. Who want it? Okay.
Think you needed two thirds of votes, our understanding?
So, um, I got a draft of the letter, it wasn't clear to me, um, actually Commissioner Cavanaro alerted me to it before I got around to reading my emails, so, it wasn't clear that it was not gonna go out with our, with our approval in the, in the draft, that wasn't her intention, but, uh, anyway, we, uh, um-
We do have it up on the screen for you, Steve.
Okay, yeah. So, as you go down through the letter, I mean, there's this sort of a general, um, I assume you've all had a chance to look at this, but general comments about the situation in South Windsor, and then, um, I provided, to go along with this, I provided, uh, online this, um, O- Office of Legislative Research Bill Analysis, and, uh, if you haven't had that, fine, if not, fine, that's what, sixty-four pages or something? So, the first comment, uh, about the conversion of commercial lots to, uh, as a right middle housing. I guess, first of all, our understanding is this is going to be sent back to the legislature.
Yeah, I just read the Hartford visitor, it sounds like he's either gonna sign it and fix it, or send it back, there's a couple options that are being, it doesn't sound like it's gonna go forward as it is, so. Right, and maybe there'll be no more.
I was gonna add to that, from my knowledge, is that, um, handshake agreement, sign it, and probably come back special session, do tweaks to it before, like, any of the effective dates, so probably like over the summer, um, yeah.
Okay, so now our understanding of what we're trying to do here is, is there anything that we wanna ask for, uh, in those tweaks, I guess would be one way to put it. And then, we have the mayor's letter, which actually was drafted before this came out, this, this decision, and, uh, maybe we should just go through each of those, or for any other issues that, uh, you folks wanna bring up. So this conversion of commercial lots to as a right middle housing, middle housing is things like townhouses, duplexes, um-
Triplexes. Triplexes.
So they're not the single-family houses that dominate in South Windsor. And the idea is that, uh, the legislation allows, um, commercial property to be, I guess we have to change our zoning to allow commercial properties to be converted to housing. I mean, the goal of this whole thing is to provide more housing, which is a critical need in the state, uh, especially affordable housing.
Can I just make us, uh, an example, we just did one, I mean, our fifty-seven acre design commercial, right? I mean, if this were to pass as it is, those developers could have come in, and as of right, did anything-
There's limitations on how big of a project you can do in the commercial zone, it's only a nine unit, I read something about it, only being nine units in a commercial piece. I, I've gotta go back to, again, this is so awkward that I-
There's a lot of detail, right?
It's a lot to try to-
There is, Michelle.
Really, um-
I was just trying to make an example of something we just did, you know?
Well, I'll give you an example of what was something you do allow, you allow a mixed use in a commercial zone. In other words, someone could come in and get nine uses of housing through a mixed use in your current regulations, you have provisions for that, so.
And we should amend our regulations.
Is there any need, I mean, are we already doing this?
Well, again, I, I don't know how strict you have to do it, but, but if someone comes in in the general commercial zone, one of the options they have is to make it a mixed use application. It was never built, but one was approved over here by Bob Urso, where he had a row of housing in the back and commercial in the front, way back fifteen, twenty years ago, remember that? So it's a mixed use, so we already have examples where you can do that in your general commercial zone.
So this is a little more complicated now than that, so, uh, it requires housing authorities, um, to post reports on, I'm sorry.
That's different, yeah.
So, the ability for these things to be approved without requiring a public hearing, which we did require, a variance, special permanent, or without requiring a variance or a special exception or a special permit, or without requiring a discretionary zoning action, other than a determination that, A, the site plan conforms with applicable zoning regulations, and B, there are no substantial impacts to public health and safety, and that defines middle housing. Duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, cottage clusters, perfect sixes, townhouses, which are defined elsewhere. So, um, you know, uh-
Interesting, so that means you'd have to write a regulation for your general commercials, I guess, and your gateway zone, all your commercial zones?
And this is effective, uh, next year, July one, so, we'll probably leave that for the next commission to deal with. So I don't know if we agree with the mayor's concerns, or we're, feel like we're, we don't have a problem with this.
How can we not be concerned?
I think we've given enough blood to affordable housing and whatnot, I think at, at the rate we're at, we're, we're close to seven percent. If you look at the list of the community, there's other towns that can get picked on, we've had about enough, I think we can ask for a reprieve here. And it's not just about housing, it's about human resources, it's about the schools, there's a lot that goes to play here. It's not anybody saying we're against affordable housing, but my God, when does it end for us, you know?
We heard that presentation, oh, the superintendent did last year, and she pretty much, like, we need to be cautious about what, she's not, she didn't say she agreed or disagreed, but we need to be cautious, and I think taking some of the control away.
I, I think there's a couple different issues, um, so you're all talking about the impact of, um, eight thirty G, and, you know, I, I believe, and I think we've talked about this, certainly Kevin's brought it up, trying to go to the powers that be and get an exemption, a waiver because of our unique situation. That said, I'm curious, do we know who wrote this letter? This looks like something written by a real estate attorney, not by the mayor.
I actually may know the question to that, and it stems from, uh, a letter I was sent from a different town, that is the same exact letter. It's a letter by the New Canaan First Selectman or Mayor, word for word, copy and paste. So it could be the Connecticut Republican Party, House Republicans, Senate Republicans, I'm just spitballing here. Of course, there is a paragraph or two that Mike Roulette where I, I believe, so I'll give credit to that, but for the most part, it's, who knows? Um, I, it could have been distributed out to mayors and first selectmen's across Connecticut, um, I don't know, I'm just guesstimating at that point.
So, not, not that I don't enjoy reading, you know, sixty-three page legislative documents that, you know, are as exciting as root canal, but, I mean, if we're going to put our name on something and endorse it, I would like an expert, someone like maybe one of our real estate attorneys, to come in and maybe help us understand what this says, what it doesn't say, vet it a little bit, understand it, because if we're gonna sign our name to it, we should have the opportunity to ask questions.
Do we-
Know what we're, know what we're signing.
Do we run into a little bit of a time crunch now? Do we run into a little bit of a time crunch now? I mean, there, if we're gonna send something on behalf of, before he either does the handshake, which I don't know if I'm all in support of that idea either, but if we're gonna give our opinion, or at least our wishes, I, I feel like we need to send something soon, right?
Well, Michelle, are all the people on the signature line down here, are they all on board, except?
I, I don't know. I, I only got the same copy you did. I'm not really privy to how it's been responded to. Didn't come from us. It was done to the mayor.
The one thing I'm surprised is not on here is the blurb in that ninety-two pages about the Housing Authority. That, in my opinion, we've been trying, really struggling with our Housing Authority and their kind of inaction, if you will. I know we just renovated, you know, Flax Hill and, and the other one, Mount Wapping Muse, but we've got land. I don't know why our Housing Authority is not more active. We don't, haven't met, I don't think, in two years.
What I can tell you, um, I'm on a housing committee CROG is doing right now, and they're looking for sites to explore potential future housing. And so I submitted that site as well as, um, just recently, last week, and they're gonna pick, hopefully they're gonna do more than three sites, that's what the study has, but they're gonna try to do more in the region. And I thought it was a good example, if you remember, our Affordable Housing Plan talks about maybe densifying Flax Hill as well as adding on to it. So I think it might be a good example, if you're trying to come up with examples of how communities might be able to take existing housing and create more affordable. So I'm, I'm hoping it'll get selected as one of the ones. I'll keep you posted. But I did reach out to Mark Kazakowski, who's now on Housing Authority, just to make sure that I wasn't off base in putting this forward. And I did let George Daniels know as well, so who knows, maybe something will come in. It's supposed to be a high level review of that, whether, you know, how it might be able to be a housing site, so.
Let me just ask, does everyone have a copy of the draft letter?
They should have.
Now, do you have a copy of the sixty-four page thing?
Yeah, it was an email.
What I would suggest is, uh, Josh, if you could bring that up, okay? And this is discussed on page six, this particular item. There we go, as of right. So that's exactly what they're proposing.
Can I ask you though, do you see anywhere in here where it's telling you like what kind of density you're supposed to be creating there? I, I, that's what I don't see, you know, they say to create your regulations. Well, if you write your regulations, they're only two units per acre, I mean, you're not gonna get much. So I don't really know, I mean, they're describing middle housing, but they're not telling you, at least that I can see, what kind of density would a commercial site would have to have or be allowed.
Kind of covered, like, right? And I, I, cause I thought I saw something about nine.
Well, it talks about up to nine, and it says that middle housing is a residential building with two to nine units, so that's what they're calling a middle housing unit, two to nine, such as duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, cottage clusters, townhouses, that kind of thing. So that's, they're not really limited to nine, but I kind of read originally. To me, this is stripping away the rights of the public to speak up about something they may be concerned about.
It's like the siting council with the solar panels in East Windsor. People didn't have a say. You're getting it?
Right or wrong, I don't like the fact that it's stripping people's rights away. That's just my personal.
I'm a hundred percent.
So does eight thirty G, though.
Yeah, but we have control over this.
Every single thing is set in front of us.
No, no.
Uh, yeah, I'm not arguing it's right or wrong. I'm just saying, the stripping of the rights is what bothers me, right? So, eight thirty G may have done it, but why let this one go through and?
I think the, the difference here is that almost any single-family home in South Windsor that gets built is, is as of right. It doesn't come through the planning and zoning commission. And there's usually no process to, to halt that kind of development. It's not saying an apartment complex is gonna be as of right. It's gonna say, oh, if you wanna add an N A D U, or you're gonna build a duplex, let's say you already have a single-family home, or you're gonna put a wall down the middle, make it a duplex. Then it'll be permitted the same way that a single-family home is in, uh, in, in South Windsor. Communities across Connecticut as well. That's basically what it's saying. You could still like attend a zoning meeting, see what's going on. You could still like even email the, the planning department. You could even email commissioners and, and voice your concerns. Like, there's no one stopping you from doing that. Um, so.
But it stops us.
Well, there will still be a site plan.
Yeah, it still goes through inland wetlands, still goes through planning and zoning.
Well, I wouldn't quite say that. Other than a determination that the site plan, so there would be a site plan review.
I'm saying you have to have criteria. I mean, you're gonna have coverage ratios, you're gonna have densities, you're gonna have buffers, or, I mean, that's what I'm saying. It doesn't prescribe what it has to look like. It's just something you have to allow it, so. I could write a regulation, I would say that takes into like all our other regulations that we have for housing, the kinds of things that we're concerned about.
It isn't like the site, like the solar thing where they just dropped it and the people.
They're giving, they're giving you, at least you as a commission, an ability to write a regulation for it.
And, and to have a site plan review like we do other site plans.
But it's taken away the, the choice of whether or not you want it.
But, but here, but I think that not even take away the site plan, this is like commercial use, very limited restrictions. Adding nine units, we don't know what the size of those units, I don't know, there's like, right, but how many, there is some, there's not, nothing that's gonna be able to help us control how many of these get built and how many kids. There's no control factors that we get to put in place. And so every time someone comes with an application, that's all the points that you discuss, so.
Item A, again, read what it says for item A.
I, I don't see how that's going to be.
So I'm trying to think of who would take advantage of someone like this, you know, like in a community. Well, look, the Berlin Turnpike, you have a lot of hotels and motels down there. They're commercially zoned. If something like that, like, you know, if they're a failing business or whatever, is that a target of this kinda? I'm trying to think of, you know, like, our community, we have periphery commercial sites, but we, you know, to me, they, they tend to get reused. Where I imagine there's other communities where there's some dying commercial sites that are dead, right, and they have no life at all. We don't seem to have that so much in our town, but I can see where there may be some other smaller towns that just don't have any viability on some commercial sites. Retail isn't happening, you know, we hear that over and over again, so I, I'm just trying to understand who might, you know, wha- what is the target of this particular?
But it's limited to middle housing, which is those particular types of houses. So you're not gonna take a hotel and turn it into a residence.
Just little cabins, you might.
Uh, if it's, yeah, but I'm talking about like.
Yeah, no, like a strip mall hotel, yeah, yeah, I get it.
Even a, even a motel with twenty units.
Yeah, it wouldn't be that, you know.
Wouldn't, wouldn't be that.
I guess how, why would it not be?
Or maybe if you, you tear it down and you gotta sell it.
Well, this is for housing, right.
I'm just, I'm just saying the public hearing part is what bothers me.
Right.
Could we argue that at least they give us the ability to allow a public hearing?
Isn't the chair, even with a site plan review, able to say, you know what, I think there's enough public interest, we're gonna have a public hearing?
You can, you can have a public hearing. It doesn't, it's different than if you have a public hearing when it's a special exception, obviously, but yes, you can have a public hearing at a site. It just follows the same timeline regardless of a site plan.
I, I will also say, uh, the control factor with this is our regulations. So, they're not gonna come in and build like a, a, a nine-story skyscraper because every floor could be its own unit. They're still compliant to our own regulations. They're not gonna bypass it like, let's say, eight thirty G. So, yeah, I mean, that's, that's the other thing, and, um, yeah. So it's up to us to dictate what we want our regulations to look like, whether or not we wanna respond. What was that?
Get a hearing to do it.
Yeah, and, and, yeah, it's up to us to decide whether or not we wanna respond to this piece of legislation and say, okay, if they're gonna maybe not have public hearings, we should rewrite some of our regulations to say, we're gonna like find to, like, fine tune, safe proof our regulations. So we feel more confident, uh, if we're gonna see that kind of development, anywhere between two and nine units.
So on a piece of commercial property, there can only be, be one building of nine units? You can't have several buildings?
Well, you can do cottages, you can do nine individual.
Cottage clusters.
But only nine units on the whole?
No, 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 it doesn't say that. It says a nine-unit building is.
Okay, so you can have several buildings.
Yeah, you can have several buildings, correct.
So it's just not nine.
The building has two to nine units. I, I, I've got the feeling that this is, this sounds worse than it is. Because of all the fine print and you read the language.
Oh, no.
We get to use our zoning regulations, we have a site plan review. It's, the only question is whether we wanna allow commercial property to turn into residence, but we already do, right?
You do, along with commercial, it's a mixed use, right? You can't take this.
Well, we just took fifty-seven acres of prime commercial land and we just,
Right.
out of fear of God, said, let's do senior housing, for no other reason, just.
We'll get to a second.
Cause of fear. Now, this just complicates it. It opens up Pandora's box. Just open a wide open now.
There's actually something we'll get to later that, that means that what we just did there would not comply, okay, so. Because you're not allowed to make, and it's one or the other, other term, maybe we'll get to it, but, uh, hold that thought, okay? Cause there's problems that we would have had with that regulation. Um, may still have with the regulation, actually. Trying to make everything affordable, or, yeah, affordable, or, uh, senior. So what's our op- opinion on this? Do we, do we wanna, I don't know how we.
I'd like to go through and talk about each of the points, because each of the points is wrong, in my opinion, and there's some facts to back it up and others. So we just spoke about, the point, the first point is conversion of commercial lots of as of right. By the way, I'm reading off the New Canaan letter, which is identical to this.
So, that, that's fine. That's, that's just normal. People, people do that all the time.
Yeah, everybody's trying to.
So I don't think we should pick on that one.
But no, the first, we just spoke about as of right, so I'll go down to arbitrary fair share mandates. In this bill, there are no mandates tied to fair share. They stripped all the mandates, cause that was unpopular, and I agree. I don't, I don't like fair share. And the mandates orig- tied in the original bill were removed. It talks about the transit-oriented communities portion, that's an opt-in provision. There's no mandates tied to, uh, fair share in that portion, so that's false. The elimination of parking requirements, while it seems like there's elimination, if a developer comes in, and I believe if they do less than twenty-four unit, and this is from my memory from the bill, if they do a less than, yeah, under twenty-four units.
You know what, Ellen, I think we're, I'm trying to lead the discussion to go through these things one at a time.
I, I was hoping that.
Both the point that the letter is making and what the, this is a summary of the law, this isn't the law. So if you don't mind, I'd like to kind of stick to that approach. I mean, what's our opinion of item one? Do we agree with it? Do we wanna change it? Um, and?
Well, no matter what, we.
We can't change it.
I believe that we can.
It's our, we, we can tell her we won't support a letter that says those words, if, if we don't, if we wanna change it. So did you have any points on what's in item one?
I already showed them. With the as of right, yes.
And, and just to summarize again?
That our regulation and control mechanism are our regulations, and if we're really concerned about someone coming in and trying to fool us, it's up to us to change our regulations to, to fit that. Uh, as I said, residents can still feel free to, uh, contact the planning department, and of course, if Michelle hears complaints, she'll tell us. And we can make the decision of whether or not we wanna, uh, move forward with that. Because, like I said, like, it's still gonna go through inland wetlands, still gonna go through the regulatory process, it's just no public hearing and that's it. We're still making a determining factor of voting on it or not.
And Ellen, what, in your, in your experience with, you know, your groups, uh, why do they take that out? Why, what are they afraid of with a public hearing?
So, I, I wouldn't say afraid, but usually public hearings are seen, and we've seen this as an example time and time again, that public hearings are seen as a driver to block, uh, not only affordable housing, but housing in general, due to qualitative complaints that, that basically aren't really grounded in either reality or anything factual. It's, oh, it's gonna be too noisy, or, oh, we're gonna get traffic, and there's nothing to, to back up that there's actually gonna be an excess amount of traffic compared to a regular amount of increase of traffic. I'm just naming an example. So it's still like being approved, the difference is it's going through a regular system of what other developments could be approved as. It's just, yeah, that, that's essentially.
There still be alerts to a butters within a certain amount of people, something in the newspaper? I mean, would there still be communication?
For my knowledge and.
No, there wouldn't be anything in a newspaper.
Yeah, like.
No communication.
So again, you would write a regulation and you would decide, like, we don't notify a butters unless it's a special exception, zone change. I mean, you can put that in there as notification requirement for this type of particular application. I think the thing that you, you wanna remember is, is when something is as of right and it meets your requirements, you, you approve it, right? It's not like, so I guess that's the one thing that a public hearing could help, y- again, modify an application to meet your requirements that if maybe there's some things that aren't meeting them, but it's not like, um, a special exception where you have the ability that, you know, you get so crazy that you, you wanna deny it. If it's an as of right use, you really should be looking that it's meeting all your requirements.
I think there has been some good things come out of public hearings without rejection. And people, and people are more content, you know?
Yeah, maybe it needs more screening to meet, you know, the screening goals or something like that, absolutely.
So there's, there's an assumption here, I wanna make sure that we're clear. Our regulations supersede this?
No, this tells you to write a regulation to allow it, is what this says.
But also to.
You're gonna write a regulation to allow it.
Also.
Yeah, we're liberalizing the zoning laws. Essentially, it's a libertarian stance of saying, we're gonna allow more kinds of stuff to be built.
On our commercial zones, as far as housing goes, and it's gonna look like this. It's gonna be able to cover fifty percent of the lot, it's gonna have setbacks of, you know, just like any other type of, um, use, you're gonna prescribe requirements, from how I'm reading this.
Yeah, plus, when we do rewrite it, we're still gonna have, we're required to have a public hearing for any like zone change, text amendment, that's, that's not gonna change.
So to me, though, to me, we can live with this, but the issue of converting commercial to residential is the one thing that, you know, once we say they have it by right, they come in with a well-designed project, meets our regulations. They've got it. You know, we can quibble about this, where the driveway is or something, but they've got it. But now we're taking commercial land and turning it into residential, which.
Buy by grant list.
That's, that's to me the remaining issue. In terms of making it work, I think it's workable. And not that hard to control, but I personally would fall on the one thing about protecting commercial.
Yeah, and I don't really know, when, you know, when you say commercial, I think of how much of our zoning could be called out as being commercial. I, I, you know, in general commercial, restricted commercial, um, your buckland gateway zone, your design commercial. So you have a lot of commercial types of zoning, and I don't know if this is a car launch over all of them, or, you know, I don't know. Looking at other towns, everybody kind of carves out different types of zoning classifications, so I can see where it gets a little unclear.
And some of the things I've read, like this commercial, re- redoing some of this commercial space, there is no, there is nothing that you can go back and say you need to have so many. And I know that here, we don't probably have as much of an issue, but so many parking spaces. So it does force like on-street parking too. There's no requirements for the building owner to make sure that there's X amount.
Again, I think that would, I, I guess it depends on if that other law park kicks in. The park, that's part of the home requirement. I, I wonder if they would couple together, yeah, could fix it.
So I think, personally, not converting commercial is the only issue for me. I think it's workable, we could control it. Uh, but, once we say they can do it, they come in with a good design, has the right amount of parking, whatever that is, uh, et cetera. We have to approve it.
I, I don't think we can lose commercial, valuable commercial land. I just, the town, we can't sustain, like, like turning commercial to residential.
You, you know, you, you've really allowed it, in, in a perfect example, is your town center zoning now that you have this overlay zone, you're allowing residential with commercial. So essentially, you're, you know, um, I think you have regulations that are already hybrid. And a lot, your buckland gateway zone allowed you to get different types of residential. So I could see where you may not be in favor of just handing over more commercial land just to housing, because you already have several in your, you have several examples over the last ten, twenty years of how you've allowed housing to occur in your commercial zone, so.
The guy up, up on Buckland that has it, we approved this whole beautiful thing and.
Jeff Sager, the material.
So who's to say he backs out like Kroski's property? That's all commercial, right? And it could all be housing, by right. He could just say, oh, love that, let's go.
That's what I'm getting to. I know we have hybrid and I know we have certain things, but.
That's what I'm saying, I, I agree with you that maybe you don't wanna give away.
Our commercial is our tax base.
So what I'm suggesting is, we rewrite this so it deals with that issue. I don't know if it doesn't already wholly deal with that. Um, I think that's the.
But isn't that what they're, that's what they're saying?
This is what it says, right? Protecting properties currently zone commercials and criticals.
So I think maybe we, we agree with that?
I agree with that.
Let's go along with number two. Chair, chair, I, I gotta admit, and that's on, in the bigger document.
Page seventeen, there's one on that.
Yeah, page seventeen. Big document.
I didn't print that thing, so.
In cartridges costs too much.
So, um, so OPM isn't allowed to establish a methodology for determining the need for affordable housing units in each of. So OPM is allowed to establish a methodology for determining the need for affordable housing units in each of the state's regions. Thoroughly allocating this need to each region's municipalities. Now, they already did this. And we were given what, a thousand, something like a thousand?
Uh, it's more than that, uh, I I don't have it right in front of me. It it was like less than twelve hundred.
Okay, yeah, okay, something in that order. And we have what, seven hundred now or including what's been authorized?
Six hundred and ninety.
So what I don't understand is. If we realize we haven't met our fair share.
So but but we, fair share is not affordable units, so that I think that's, that's a confusion, right? Um, fair share is housing units. Eight thirty G talks about affordable units. Cause we're not talking about, Ellen, am I correct? These aren't talking about.
Yeah, I think it's just affordable.
That's it's current determining the need for affordable housing units, thoroughly allocating this need to each region. It is about affordable.
It is about affordable units, okay, I.
I mean, just, it's. The bill requires most municipalities to report.
Because they're gonna have you decide whether your number with eight thirty G is gonna be the number or the fair share number. Based on what your community can support.
So the ten percent's out the window?
Well, it's not decided.
This, does this mean they could take like if the town has bought land and they're preserving it or whatever, they can, they can come and say that that land should be part of?
Well, I think the second paragraph here talks about, it says requires to report to the let's say vacant and developable land. That's what I think you're talking about. And so, so how.
Take that land and allocate it to this, even though we've like, you know, marked it as whatever, can't build on it.
So so but again, to me, this is vacant land is necessarily just town land, right? Cause it doesn't say just municipal land, it could be anybody's vacant land. So what I read this paragraph to mean, and again, was that we'd have to look at our town and decide where vacant land is residentially. And come up with some kind of density that could potentially be getting and come up with some kind of potential number of future units that we thought we could do. And if that number was less than your fair share, it might be adjusted to, you know, it was supposed to be something based on. A submission by um, beginning of the year of this land and what you could.
Do if it's, it owned, it's owned by somebody, how can, just because it doesn't have anything on it, so you're taking somebody else's.
Could be used for housing.
And somebody else's land that they own, you could.
I don't know how to read that paragraph, it's not saying that, it's saying the, on vacant and developable land. Is there definitions anywhere or what they're, how they define these?
Creates a process for municipalities to seek an adjustment.
If that's allowing higher densities on, is that kind of thing?
OPM, yeah, OPM is coming up with this number. Okay, and we get the number and then we have to say.
We can do it or not.
Report, uh, report on the vacant and developable land, create a process for seeking an adjustment of their fair share.
People have too much time.
So I mean, it's a way for us to fight the fair share thing, okay?
So, so does this mean though that, let's say we've got land that we've just preserved, we're not gonna do anything, we will decide when we're gonna do something on it. Could, yeah, opens, could they come in and say this year, we're gonna talk about, even though we're not ready?
So I think our open space land that you have that's bought by bond, I mean, that's legally restricted, right? Uh, you, your open space, you got through subdivisions by law, it's ninety nine years open space, so anything that's protected, I don't think they could come after, but you do have other land. We have, we own other land that is not, um.
And that's where, you know, I've talked about it before, development rights. When there's farms and people that own land. The town council, you pony up, stop buying trucks and equipment and start buying land for development rights. To stop this chaos because living in a dictatorship, they're gonna start telling us, you know. You shaking your head no, Alan, you're part of this. I mean, you, you're part of the right.
I just don't agree with the terminology, that's all.
What, what part don't you dis-?
It's not a dictatorship, it was democratically chosen and there's still parts of this, so if we could. Again, I don't use the word dictate, but we can still choose of how we want it to look and impact South Windsor, that's all. I wouldn't call it a dictatorship.
I think we've been impacted.
I mean, vacant land is not developed or lacks essentially. Uh, essential ancillary improvements above and below water required for it to serve a useful purpose. Um, so it defines developable. Basically, it's the same, I I think it's what we call buildable.
Buildable, buildable.
Okay, not wetland, it's not, you know. So we have to just file a report. Now, does it make us do anything with that information?
I, again, what I thought I, we read is you file a report that tells you how many numbers of units you think it can generate. And if it's not your fair share, then that's where your discussion point can happen. And I thought it was gonna be a decision after, by the legislature, whether they're gonna use an eight thirty G number. For your affordable housing or fair share number, that that is open for discussion based on what communities came up with.
So six, oh, remember the previous page, uh.
Hoping for CROG to give you a lot of guidance on this, to be honest with you, because I know they're picking it apart.
Come into our next meeting and answer these questions that we seem to have.
Honestly, I think it's so, you know, I I did speak to Heidi at CROG just last week about this and and there's this num- many questions that. We have that they have.
So I skipped the section, dropped back to page twelve.
Still trying to digest it.
Can we just go, for the vacant land, I I, the open space, I'm not sure, I mean, the idea that you have to give them. A list of all your vacant and developable land, we have to give them an accounting of it? How do we not think that our open space couldn't be potentially?
Cause it's not available to develop.
It's not?
No, it's protected, it's got legal protection, either deed restrictions on it or.
Okay.
Some, so what kind of land does a town own that could be developed?
Um, let's see, well, when you bought the Pleasant Valley School, you bought it outright, um.
The the Mitchell property across on.
No, it was bought with bond money. Town, you know, you have on Sullivan Ave, we, the corner Sullivan Ave and West Road, that's a piece the town owns.
Let me interrupt here because there's more on this on page twelve, which is actually the thing that has the teeth in it. The other thing is a reporting requirement, uh, so, um. This planning for municipal fair share allocations. Must, you know, we must create a realistic opportunity under priority affordable housing plan. The bill establishes a framework for giving certain municipalities priority for specified discretionary state funding. So this is where they say, um, you get priority for money if you A, create a realistic op- opportunity for. To get to your fair share and are exempt from these planning requirements because they have a relatively low per capita wealth. Um, so I don't know if this even applies to us.
It does.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have twenty percent below poverty.
Follow through here, um, you know, on page thirteen, you see, we would become effective on June one. On twenty twenty eight, and then going on, um.
That's when you'd have to have your priority plan in place, so it, it takes the state and divides it into three. And we're actually in the last third based on the alphabet.
Oh, I see.
Starts having to require it.
Now, here's the, the kicker, I think, at the bottom of page fifteen.
Here's the kicker.
The bill specifies that the plan must provide for a certain creation. For the creation of different types of affordable housing units to meet twenty five percent of the fair share goal. Specifically, the municipality must ensure that any affordable housing units. Of any affordable housing units, at least fifty percent are family units. Not age restricted and have at least two bedrooms. No more than twenty five percent of the units are age restricted. So what we just did on twenty-two Wheeler, uh, we're not, pit the bill. Um, going on, at least twenty five percent are rental units, and of these, at least fifty percent are family units. Uh, and no more than twenty five percent of the units are studio or one-bedroom units, which is another way, you know, we did the Geisler thing. Was another way we, uh, tried to limit the impact of that development.
Oh, is this an opt-in or opt-out thing you're reading?
No, read the next paragraph. Well, if you can't do it, what you can do about it.
If the municipal, municipality opts to assert when submitting its priority plan, then it cannot meet. The twenty-five percent of its fair share goal and provide for the creation of the unit types mentioned above, then it must explain why. And what steps it will take to overcome the, any impediments like building a new school.
Paid fire department, new school.
So that's a part of the plan that you need to create.
Right, you've a fire, paid fire department.
Affordable housing and you're also bringing in.
But, whether that's accepted.
Where I was going with that is if we did opt out of whichever section and there were financial, um, ramifications. How much would we really lose? Do we get anything now from the state?
As far as housing monies, is that coming?
Hold on, we we got Carol in here.
So, so just send us a note on what we're gonna get in, um, twenty-five, twenty-six and twenty-seven. I, we get like, I have my email, eleven to fourteen million a year from the state.
That's not gonna build us a school.
Just sent the chart.
That will build you the gym, Paul, okay?
That'll get us a pod.
Exactly.
But, but I mean, that's, that's what we get today, which is included in your taxes, so, you know, you talk paid fire department, that's fifteen million dollars, guys.
Oh, yeah.
Added to our budget. A s- a school these days is fifty million for elementary, fifty million for elementary, about two hundred million for, you know.
I'll tell you what it is.
That's, but that doesn't.
Seven million for elementary school.
But that doesn't include the staff that's gonna be required too.
That's a real.
High schools, your high schools are about a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty.
It's the salaries and the pensions that.
Right, everything is required.
Colliers will give you the numbers. We'll build in any school for fifty million dollars.
I mean, having read through this and getting totally confused, I.
It wasn't just me.
I guess I don't understand exactly what happens if we can't do what they want. I mean, we can try to say we can't do it. But I I don't even know if the discretionary funding, we get any of it, no. Or is it all of our discretionary?
I think the idea is this is a little bit of carrot, right? If you do these kinds of things, you will qualify for some of the money that's gonna be. Being handed out for housing projects, so, I mean, it's, if you're trying to get some funding assistance. This may be a, a means of doing it.
I don't think we want their funding assistance for what it's gonna cost us, the ramifications.
We would love it for our housing authority though, wouldn't we? I mean, that'd be great to get assistance in building a housing authority project. Over there on Oakland Road where we already have the land, so I mean, there may be some funding that we do want for housing.
But do we want it to be fifty percent family units?
What that goes to is that's saying you have to create a plan that that targets that, right? That's what, that's what those numbers are talking about. In this priority plan that you need to write, which we will, you know, if this were written into law, we would have to have one by twenty twenty. Seven or nine, wherever it was, you'd have to have that as a target, right? Whether or not you do it. My whole question on this is, what do you do if a town, if you don't have, anybody wants to come and do housing in your town? I mean, you know, you can write all you want, if nobody wants to come in your house and build it, there's not a market for it in your town. I don't know what happens to you then either. Maybe not in our town, but there are towns there, you know, that don't have, like you could, in more rural areas. You're gonna densify an area that maybe doesn't have services to help.
Well, we went, when we did the, when you, me and Mike went to that thing, there's towns that, the affordable housing. Nobody even wants to go there because they don't have sewers, okay? We're talking.
They don't have buses to get you to work or, you know, a lot of things.
They're scot-free, they're getting, you know, that's, that's why they'll always be the way they are. We have everything. Our sewers, our, our infrastructure's taxed out as it is right now. We can go on and on why this isn't good for us. And that we need Tom Del Nicky and Salute to help us because this is not good for us at all.
So why wouldn't we say that if we're gonna send a message, I mean, at the end of the day, our hands may be tied and this might just be, right? And then we write the regulation, but why would we not send this? And say that we are opposed to part of this and we have some concerns and not that we don't understand some of the reasoning here, but. This will be a huge taxing on the community.
So if we go back, I don't know what you just said, go back to the letter, item two.
Fair share.
Fair share mandates.
Excuse me. I think we're agreeing with item two. Everybody, Alan, you're looking skeptical.
No, I I just, I wouldn't necessarily call it a mandate because there's nothing binding in it, but I I do agree, I don't like fair share and I I will agree with the commission on that. Um, yeah, that, that's the only comment I have, because there, there is nothing binding with it and that's what they stripped away when they put it in the big bill, so.
All right, number three, I think is actually simpler. Uh, and let's start with. We start on page six. Mentions parking, I guess. Oh, yeah, there, on page seven, it talks about. At the bottom of page seven. Pro- prohibits a zone from having minimum parking requirements. You know, get, we have to get rid of our schedule of how many spaces and basically this provides for. Yeah, can you give a report for what they need?
We're talking about residential development, parking, yeah. So I kind of read that, like in our town, you give a report and you say, well, there's no parking around, so you'd be creating parking, so. You know, I I think, at least I read it, it's an opportunity, if you're in a place where there's already existing parking that would support whatever development you have. This gives an opportunity to demonstrate that, rather than just that you require parking out, out the gate. Again, in our situation, we don't have, we're not a city like that, that you have ancillary lots or parking around. That any report of someone trying to say they don't need it would not really hold any water because they wouldn't be able to provide it. So I don't think it's saying you don't have to provide parking, it's just saying that you don't, you have to demonstrate how you're providing it if it's.
You're providing enough.
Correct, basically.
Right now, our regulations tell you what's enough.
Correct, yep.
Uh, this would allow the applicant to negotiate what's enough.
What they think is enough, right?
Can I, um, ask for a process check? What is it that we were accomplished with this, this evening?
My goal, um, is that we decide whether we subscribe to this letter or wanna have a different letter. Um, so going through the six items in the letter. We'll know whether we're gonna tell the mayor, go ahead and send your letter with our endorsement, or maybe we wanna send a different letter. We decide what we wanna do with these issues.
What's our timeframe that we have to work with for it to be tomorrow? It's what it kind of sounds like from the Harvard Current article, it could have been.
I mean, one choice would have been for us to just say, yeah, we love your letter, go put our name on it, so can she send a letter with our name on it? That's the question.
I will say we probably.
Right now, she can't because we haven't discussed this.
As I say, we probably have a bit more time than tomorrow, mainly because. No, 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 I was just saying because I think Lamont's in in Paris right now for some air show and he returns next week, so like there is a week and a half, I think. Um, the legislative process, like he technically got the bill yesterday, that's a fourteen window, fourteen day window, so he. Has a little less than two weeks now, so there is, there is time. Um, I just wanted to let the commission know.
Okay, so.
I'm sorry?
Send the letter.
This later?
I'm not sure I agree with the whole.
So what don't you agree with?
The parking one. I think what they're doing is just fine in the bill.
Could, could we then indicate, um, planning and zoning with reservations, something like that?
If I'm alone in that opinion, then we don't even need that, but. So I don't know, what do people think about the changes in parking?
It removes off-street parking, we, we don't regulate on, on the street parking, right?
It's just saying it removes the ability to have parking requirements.
It's just saying it removes the ability to have parking requirements, off-street parking requirements.
For twenty-four units or below.
Yeah, so it's, it does, yeah, for twenty-four units below, that's a good point, not for like, hundred unit apartment complexes, it's for twenty-four below.
And there's a loophole to that too, if, if anyone does want to know. Um, so if the developer, and, and this is from my research, if the developer does a parking needs assessment, and they come back to the commission, for, let's say, it's a twenty-one de- unit development, the commission then can say, uh, no, we don't agree with that, we actually want a ten percent increase. You could theoretically still do a parking mandate, but it has to be a case-by-case basis, it can't be a blanket zoning regulation.
Which is really all this is saying.
Exactly.
So, that's why I'm happy, I don't agree that we need this in, uh, number three in the letter.
So can we go back to the letter, what it exactly says? I apologize, I should have had it all.
It's basically saying that anyone who goes and builds a development is gonna wanna make something that they can sell. And part of what they need to sell, kind of like, do I have a two-car garage in my house, or do I have a one-car garage and, and five bedrooms, you know, um.
I think there's a feeling that sometimes zoning requirements are very onus when it comes to off-street parking requirements for these kinds of developments, and, and developers are required to put in more parking than they feel is needed, is really what it comes down to. My experience with dealing with developers and parking requirements.
And that does control density.
Is that they don't want a parking problem. So they are always coming into us with, based on, you know, what other developments of like-time need in like communities are. So, um, I think our regulations kind of have been easily met, I mean, they, they seem to have been tweaked over the years based on what we've heard from developers building multifamily regulations. So we don't, we don't have that fight in our town about too much parking, but I think that there may be some other places.
And, I was gonna say, there was one other thing I wanted to share, um, relating back to CROG, we mentioned it earlier, so. Um, and this also ties into why, like, we're discussing and why it's on there as well. So, CROG last week had a regional planning commission meeting, they do it like once every four months, like, Steve and I serve on it, I'm an alternate, decided to go. Um, I didn't see that five years or two was on the agenda, but they discussed it. And, I'm gonna pull up my phone, because I took pictures of two different slides, but they spoke about parking and, and why it's included. Long story short, uh, let's say an overregulation of parking indirectly drives up the cost of rent, just making housing more expensive overall. And so, there was a presentation about parking and like, why this is necessary, and they use the example of, uh, funeral homes and bowling alleys, not residential, but commercial. And they compared almost every single town in, i- in CROG's jurisdiction. And the, the regulations, there's no science behind how they choose the numbers. It's ba- it's all theoretical, uh, random jargon. And what I mean by that is, if I'm trying to pull up the slides as well, um, because this is from the, the CROG meeting the other day, uh, it spoke about how there's one town that by like twenty-five square feet, there's one parking space, and a very similar town, a similar population, it's nearly quadruple that, and it just like, doesn't make sense. So I, i- if I get the slides, I'm happy to send it to Michelle and, and send it out, but that's, um, what I saw at the CROG meeting, uh, last week. They were just talking about parking, like, why, uh, this is being proposed, like, why it's necessary. Um, but yeah, that, that's why. A, a lot of the numbers that towns come up with, it's just random and there's no science behind it.
There's no science behind how many parking spots within a development versus, versus they would require.
For type of use, like, you know, restaurants need this much versus office.
If you take away the parking requirements, then you increase the density, that's what it comes down to. That's the science behind what they're doing, it's just common sense.
You can regulate density separately.
They're just, I'm just, I'm just saying, one of the reasons, the verbiage is read between lines, is that if you take that away, you can increase the density to buy of, of what you're doing there.
Potentially, if you're putting in parking that's not needed.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I mean, you could increase densities, which is what, let's face it, that's the goal, this legislation is, to get densities into communities to.
There you go.
Create more housing, I mean, that's great. I, I don't know, I, I said, I came to one of your meetings before, and I listened in, and there was some development going on, I don't remember which one. But that was like, one of the biggest concerns was how much house, uh, each unit, how many parking spots per unit? The idea that you could have teenagers, everything, and then where were people gonna park, since it was kind of a busy street for on-street parking? I mean, so, I guess at the end of the day, it could potentially impact us, and then you think we're in the northeast, snow, everything.
Fifty-five apartments? That was a big, that was a big issue on, on the apartments, on, uh, town.
That was, that might have exactly been it, and that street, how safe would it have been to have on-street parking, kids picky getting the bus? And so there was some safety concerns to that. So I could see how the parking requirement could impact us as well.
So again, isn't this where they're gonna give you a report? And if the report isn't satisfactory, then you can still require it, right? So, I mean, you'll, it's, it's just.
The applicant has to give you a report.
So parking, it's not like parking won't be addressed, it'll have to be addressed, it just have to be adjusted to your satisfaction.
Plus, anything like twenty-five units and more, we can still mandate parking however we want, even though I'm not a big fan of doing it, like, we still have the power to mandate it, like we do right now. Um, so it's like anything twenty-four below.
Now, they're two different things, the twenty-four below, you don't require parking, you let them decide, you don't even have to, you don't have an approval. Above, the, the developer determines the parking.
The larger projects.
So just, let's just say it is twenty-four units, right? And let's just say, I don't, right, but are we prepared to say, are we okay? I mean, if we have to do it, then we're gonna have to adopt it. But, if we have an opportunity to have a voice right now, are we okay that someone could build twenty-four units and not require the right amount of parking spots? And now, we're gonna do on-street parking? And but, and they don't have to bring it in front of you under twenty-four units to have approved? Are we okay with just saying, and not taking into consideration, is it a safe area for kids then to be able to, to catch the bus? Is it gonna be causing any issues traffic-wise? Um, I, I mean, I don't know why we, we wouldn't wanna be able to still have control.
Yeah, I think that may be, that may be a misstatement that's in there. Under, as under existing law, municipalities retain their general authority to adopt regulations designed to lessen congestion in the streets and promote health and general welfare. Um, the bigger developments, twenty-five and up, have to submit an assessment. The com- the commission may condition a development's approval on building an amount of parking that is not more than a hundred and ten percent of the assessment. So there's a lot of language in here about determining the number of parking spaces sensibly, rather than by some number that's written in nineteen sixty-eight when the zoning regulations were drafted. But.
I think ours have been updated since nineteen sixty-eight.
I guess, to, to speed this point, you know, that's one of the problems with, like, one law for the whole, for everybody, because we're not all the same, and we're a suburban community. And on-street parking is different in our community than it would be in downtown Hartford, where you have, you'd expect more on-street parking, right? So, I can see your point where, you know, if you don't have any controls at all, um, with twenty-four units, it's not like you, you, we have on-street parking as a regular thing for our, our multifamily developments, and would that allow this to happen? I mean, under the, the ordinance, you can park on the street, there's nothing prohibiting that, right? But, do we wanna see a development created with that?
Just think about from snow removal, right? Like, big cities like Boston, things like that, so if you're, I lived, I grew up in New York City, on-street park, you had to move your vehicles when their plow trucks were gonna start coming through. So what are we gonna do? We're gonna have people, depending on where it is, head to a grocery, not every one of our neighborhoods have sidewalks. How are people gonna back home after they drop their car off for the next six hours while their side of the street's been plowed?
I mean, then, we don't really have much public transportation either, so everybody has to have a car in town if you wanna get anywhere.
So, I mean, you have the out of saying this creates a public health and safety issue, and then they have to have enough parking to prevent that, so that's, that's the out, but.
Let's just keep our regulations in place.
Okay, well, that's what this is saying, all right? So, I'm getting a feeling that most people here would can agree with that item three. Item four, linking infrastructure grants to zoning compliance, that's section six, that's. That seems to be the, um, bill provides how prioritization for, this is on page eleven. Um, the very, you know, the title is on the bottom of page ten. The bill specifies how prioritization for discretionary infrastructure funding must be determined if a municipality qualifies for prior, priority funding under the bill's provisions on affordable housing plans and transit-oriented districts. So, I don't think we, in the current law, qualify for the priority of funding, right?
But I thought we're gonna be creating a priority map, right? So isn't that where that tie-in is? That, that, you know, we're gonna be a community that's gonna be required to create a priority map? That's kind of what I thought maybe the tie-in was gonna be, is if you had a priority map, then you could come in for the funding, but.
So discretionary infrastructure funding is the clean water fund, which is used by the sewer commission, the urban act grant program, main street investment fund, small town, there's a bunch of funds. Or the, the last one is the, uh, transit-oriented development, which we're not. I guess it's basically saying, uh, whether we qualify for any of this funding or not, uh, we don't get it if we don't need certain requirements.
I'm not sure it says that, I mean, some will say, like, we're deprioritized, um, yeah, I mean, A, we're still eligible, but B, even without this. I mean, every single agency that dishes out money to towns, they have their own, like, priority, deprioritize scheme, of like, giving out points of, oh, they have sidewalks, and oh, they have transit, but they don't have this, or take, like, and that's sort of how they dish out these grants. I mean, it doesn't really change anything. In fact, um, if a community acts in good faith to, to make, let's say, go halfway, like, they're still gonna get extra points and it only helps them. But like, this doesn't, the, it, it's not end-all, it's like, it's not the only priority scheme that exists. Like, there's a bunch of different agencies that dish out these grants, they have their own way of doing it, so in reality, doesn't really change anything.
Yeah, there are a number of grants that we can't get, because we're not downtown Hartford, and we don't have their economic problems. On page twelve, it gets a little clearer, the bill establishes a framework for giving certain municipalities prioritize, priority for specified development discretionary state funding, if A, if they create a realistic opportunity for municipality fair share uh, which we talked about, or are exempt from these planning requirements because they have a relatively low per capita property wealth. I, I, I think we could probably get some priority out of the first thing, but if we were able to go for the fair share, but we don't like that, so. I think this is kind of like, I mean, I, I guess I agree with number four in the letter. Um, what about everybody else? Um, unfunded legal costs, that's a weird one. We get sued, it's our nickel, um.
Michelle, under eight thirty G currently, if we lose, aren't we responsible for the legal fees?
I, I, I don't know that.
I think so.
It may be the case we, we've been down that road.
How many changes that?
You're saying legal fees ours, or that this one says that we're responsible for the?
If we lose, no, if we lose, we're also responsible for the builders under eight thirty G.
Yeah, really?
Yeah. It's why eight thirty G is such a fun regulation.
I think the way this one works for my belief is that if a municipality acts in bad faith, then they're liable, e- even if it's, uh, like, it's still subject to whether or not we, like, win or lose, but the only thing that this is changing is that if a municipality is clearly acting in bad faith, then they are responsible to cover the fees, like, that's.
This is on page thirty-four, gosh.
So right now, under eight thirty G, we are not required to pay the developers' legal fees.
I thought if we lose, I thought we were.
I guess it's, the town is not required to pay the developers, unless there's a separate ruling on bad faith only.
Right, which is, which, if you read the whole thing, the only way we lose is if we do it on bad faith. It's one of those legal schmiggle warning deals, but then pretty much we're responsible.
Have to prove or not prove bad faith.
Yeah.
Developers pay their own legal fees when filing eight thirty G appeals, towns pay to defend themselves, and courts rarely award attorney's fees to the winning party.
Yeah, so for example, I mean, and I'll use like a Southman's or example, if we turn down an eight thirty G application because we think it's going to, uh, like, we, we don't have like the sewer and water, we don't have the, the money to do a, a, a fire, like a, a fully funded, like, fire house and everything, um, like, that, that's like, good faith, like, I would agree that that's good faith. Um, if we're making comments saying, oh, we don't want that kind of development in town, it doesn't fit the character, like, if we're saying, like, qualitative assessments, assessments, and like, even delaying the public hearing, which it cites, then that's bad faith. So as long as we're like, putting in a good faith effort and like, denying it and showing just reason, like, I, I wouldn't see any reason to worry about this.
I guess I'd wanna maybe change that paragraph in the letter, because town, as, as that's what it's really intended to do for somebody who's not, right? For those points, then, okay, um, but I wanna make sure that it's, that that's really the intent of it.
So under the bill, if the court finds after a hearing that the agency's decision was made in bad faith, uh, or it caused undue delay, the court may award reasonable attorney fees to the applicant if the court orders the construction of a total number of units in an affordable housing development, or affordable units in a set-aside development, equally at least ninety percent of the units, blah, 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 so. I, it's a bad po- bad faith thing.
Should we just take it out then, take out number five?
Yeah.
I'd rather rewrite it, just take it out.
Yeah, it's confusing enough.
Just skip it, right?
And then number six.
Can we go back to, I'm just just pulling up again what the, the letter said for that one.
Page thirty-four, you go, yeah, or the letter.
I know, I'm okay, I'm sorry.
I don't know, but it gets more into, you know, what that type of development would do to our town with the schools and the safety stuff and all, which is really not the issue.
But I guess that that's what the, but that is the issue, so to make sure that that is not gonna be considered bad faith, if we say we're not gonna, we can't support this right now, because we don't have the infrastructure.
Our town can't support it.
Well, I feel like that's probably.
No, that's good.
I guess it's just, right, it's just like, we wanna be clear, like, that's what we, that this is where our position is, and it has nothing to do with anything other than we don't have the infrastructure right now to be able to support it.
You can't get your kids to get educated and everything else.
That is public safety, if our, if, if our sewer treatment plant can't handle it, it, like, that's in good faith. We're protecting the other people that are already here, that's.
If we can't afford a fire, full-time fire department.
That's good.
Sorry.
Did then you find good faith in there, Steve? Then, then you've just got a bunch of lawyers that are gonna sit there and.
Right.
Grab all over each other, it's bad faith, good faith.
Well, they've already shown us numbers, like, your schools can support it.
Right, and that's why, well, right, and so, who's, are they gonna take, I mean, our word for it?
Because they don't look at the fact that Southman is already, you know, like, twenty percent above the rest of the state or whatever it is.
Right, and again, I'm gonna go back to our state reps. When are they gonna be our reps?
Someday, you can always dream.
I, I think that the, it's public safety, you would not be dead faith. I think our schools and a funded fire department won't fall under public safety. They'll, they'll be like, will you have enough money to pay back? So, the fact that we have a volunteer fire department, and if we get too big, we're gonna have to go to a paid fire department, nobody's gonna consider that public safety.
You're gonna say higher.
Same thing with the schools.
Raise your taxes.
Suck it up.
Yeah, that, I mean, that, I, so, the, I think the reason they put this in the letter was for that reason, that we wanna talk about our schools and our fire department, because we feel that is essential.
I, I, so I don't know if I would remove that. Uh, so I don't know if I would remove that. I think it just shows like, uh, uh, it shows us being in good faith that we're showing our, this is our concern. It has nothing to do with the idea of bringing affordable housing, it's just we're so. Our, we're so taxed right now on being able to do everything that we need to be able to do, that it would just bring such hardship. And who's gonna pick up?
Well, I think what we just did with twenty two wheeler is an excellent example of good faith. And we sat down with them, we talked about with their issues, we talked about with our issues, uh, we came to something that. We weren't terribly enthusiastic about, but it worked as a good compromise, um. That was good faith. They listened to our concerns about the schools, um, we weren't lying about that problem. So I I think if you're in a point where you really have to build a new school to have this development be built. I I don't know how they could call that bad faith.
I don't think they can. I mean, we've listened to our superintendent schools basically say that if you, if we add. X number of kids to a classroom, I'm gonna need a portable. She she's explained it all to all of us very clearly.
That's just money, though. And staff is just money and that's, you know, that would be where you could lose a court case. See, they've raised your taxes, you know, you're gonna get taxes when these people raise your taxes, you know.
So, and I mean, I guess, if you really read what they're saying, I mean, I don't see what what the concern is with including keeping that. In there, I mean, I think that we're sticking to the whole port point of education and what we can afford. And the concerns we have.
I think we always act in good faith. I don't think there's ever been a time. Where we've been accused, Michelle, am I correct? Have we ever been at a case where we did anything with in with bad faith? I don't think we act that way, I mean. Yeah, I mean.
So, uh, nu- number five, uh, I'd take it out. Anybody else? I mean, how many would like to take it out? How many would like to not take it out?
Can I vote on that, even though I'm not voting person? This is my opinion. Alright, so I say keep it.
How about you at least reword it to to reflect the bad faith in losing as opposed to just saying every single time you have.
I think it overstates the case, so maybe we could reword it, so it doesn't.
Sure, if you wanna offer some wording, I don't see a reason why you.
Well, the way you just read it, you said that if we lose and it's in bad faith, then we have to pay the developers' fees, right? Okay, that's not what this says. So if we could say we're statutorily obligated to pay a developer's legal fees in eight thirty lawsuits. Where South Windsor loses in bad faith. Is a budget buster or something like that, but I I just think it's a big difference. That you don't pay developers' legal fees every single time in in the lawsuit, it's only if you lose in bad faith. Right, so add that to it and then I could live with that. By itself, I I it's just misleading.
Okay, can you, Michelle?
So, Bob, tell me one more time, you you went into there, um, paid developers' legal fees when it operates in bad faith, right?
When you lose a case.
When you lose a case and 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 develop and it was done in bad faith.
And then six, I think it's just a general.
And do we know that it overrides the entire plan of conservation of development? Does it say that?
I think there's, it's like an inference, I didn't read the whole bill. But it's an inference because it's stripping away at certain things that you may have control over, or you may have to go change what you've already put.
I mean, so the author came to the conclusion that it does. Is this Mike's work? Mike added something or?
Oh, I don't know, maybe.
It's it's from the copy and paste document, so it might, it's a template. I'm not gonna say it's new Canons, I'm just gonna say that this was sent out to a bunch of first like men mayors and. A template was given to them and they could choose however they wanted it to be.
Could you at least say?
Give you some wording.
Yeah, that's right, it's a little bit different, there's more text in that one.
Could you at least say overrides portions of South Windsor's plans? Conservation development, because it doesn't negate the whole plan, does it?
I'm just a little confused by that because our our P O C D is non-binding, so at that point, like what?
It it it, you could say it conflicts, it doesn't really override.
Yeah, conflicts, that's.
Tactyphily, it's complex. And and I would say with portions of, you know, it's not like. Yeah, I mean, we support affordable housing in the plan, right? So I would say with portions of the country.
Okay, um.
So keep one. And keep two. We keep three, four, we're gonna reword five and we have a little change in six. Did I just say that right?
Even if five were just adding the bad.
That from that Bob came up, right, okay. Otherwise, we would support it.
Here's why I like Montana.
I heard houses are cheap there still.
Oh, yeah.
So we can get this down to their office, uh, the mayor's office to remember.
Michelle, you said the town attorney has no opinion on this?
I don't know, I I don't know if the town attorney saw this, I I again, this kinda came to you guys and me at the same time, I had no.
Sensitive to attorneys, but wouldn't it sense to at least have a look at it before we say okie dokie?
Well, I mean, the mayor probably ought to be doing the same thing.
We're sitting here having read four hundred thousand pages and we're making our own decisions on what these four hundred thousand pages say. I would like to know, and I agree with what Paul was saying earlier, I'd like to know what somebody who's more familiar with it, read it and understands it. Thanks before we sit there. I could, I could dream, I could dream, but I just think.
Though, we we should be getting Craig does an analysis, we did initial analysis of it already, but there were some questions in it. So I fully expect to get some more information as this moves forward and I will share it with everybody because. There are gonna be some things that we're gonna need to do with our regulations as a result of this, I would imagine, so.
And this is probably not going away and we don't know what tweaks are being asked for.
No, and then actually I'm going to a conference on this Friday, it's a annual conference we have on planning law. At Mark Twain's uh house and we'll be interested to hear with the latest of all the uh legal. People that have been evaluating all week long, so.
Before we adjourn, I have, I have a a question for the commission about what we do going forward. The solar farm up on uh Scannick. Was decided to be a large project and we treated it with a with a public hearing, et cetera, et cetera. And we did a really good job on that. If someone puts a solar on their house or a business puts a small. Insulation on the land behind their business, that's treated as a small because they use the electricity. At least on an annualized basis, they use the electricity they generate for their own purposes. Uh, the example that kinda gets confusing and don't get me wrong, I think this is a great project, but there's a six acre project behind New Way Tobacco. It's kinda large, it looks large, I mean, it looks like a solar farm, okay? Where it is, no problem, but if that same thing were built, you know, behind your house. Would you want to have a more thorough review from planning and zoning of that project? So this would say. Um, some of the things that qualify now as small really ought to be treated as large. Uh, do you want maybe Michelle and me and somebody from the energy committee to try to redraft that regulation to? To cover that situation?
That has something come up that.
This is a case of trying to prevent a disaster, okay?
Well, that's good.
You know, like we had with the with the uh, a certain warehouse, you know, we didn't think of it in advance, so I'm try trying. Now, there's another issue that's coming up more and more now, and that is these backup batteries. That have their own issues. First of all, they make noise, they have to be cooled. Uh, the small ones go in someone's garage, okay, that's their problem. The big ones are really big, they're like shipping containers. Uh, full of lithium, okay, and air conditioning going, um, and I think we had a project that sort of started to me. Get to the surface and that went away, so should we write something that includes those in our solar regulations?
Not allowing them?
Well, whatever, at least requiring appropriate review.
Are you thinking of the project that almost went to Siding Council or the battery?
Yeah, no, that was large enough to go to the Siding Council.
But you're right, you could see that on a smaller scale.
Yeah, now some warehouse decides to put solar on their roof, a thirty thousand square foot or three hundred thousand square foot warehouse. They're gonna have battery backup somewhere on that.
So now you allow that right now as of right?
Yeah, as of right, it's a small, it's a small, but if it was, you know, on Talbot Lane. Uh, next to those residents, they'd be hearing it. So, you know, where do they put the inverters? Do we wanna control things like, you know, where do they put the equipment that makes the noise and what kind of?
Let me ask it, because you you are well educated, versed on this, but can those systems be contained within the building? Their own air handler, their own room that's insulated to protect the neighbors, like if.
Be, I I mean, there's all kind, you could address in the regulations that there's adequate mitigation of noise. And, you know, if they wanna put it inside, they wanna build a shelter, uh, they wanna use really, really quiet equipment, like.
Yeah, I mean, we've had inquiry fairly recent about a very large scale on a roof.
And again, that's consistent with wanting to have renewable energy.
Within residential.
No, no, not still commercial, but I mean, you know, noise is noise, if you're gonna want to regulate that, we don't currently.
Yeah, now if they put the inverters on the residential side of the building, it could be a problem, if they put the inverters on the industrial side of the building, you know, that neighborhood. It's a different thing, so that's the kinda thing where maybe we need to. And, you know, I'm offering to initiate that, but I didn't wanna come in with something and surprise everybody.
No, it's a great idea.
Okay.
And if we're talking about that, I just wanted to ask you based on the four or the two hearings you had tonight. I think we're proposing that not to be a special exception, the the car, um, but more by site plan. But what do you think about tempering conditional permit renewals? Do you wanna handle those maybe at staff level rather than seeing them come back here?
Especially if they're continuous, like I I feel like some of these guys that have like Tommy Lovett's been coming here for like.
Well, he's a, he's he's a home occupation.
I know, what I'm just saying, you know, like.
I mean, we could do home occupations by renewal too, if if unless there's some issues.
Yeah, if there's, if there's no complaints and if there's no, you know.
So I I'd draft some tweaks to those for the next time we do some tweaks.
Much fun as it is to listen.
Yeah, if there's, if there are no complaints and it's just easy for them.
What's it like to collect their money, you know?
The time they put into their presentation is impressive.
Cause your next meeting, I think you have three or four of them that are like, you know, older than Justin.
It's not that they'll come to a meeting like this. They're not professionals here.
So who, who writes some language to have some staff level?
Um, just a quick question, moving, just to off everything, can I get, everything's good, um. The BMW motorcycle place that was on Route five, which is now gone.
Yeah, it's a car dealership.
That's coming in, right?
Yep, he's already got his license signed and everything, yeah. He's over in Bloomfield now coming over to South Windsor or expanding to South Windsor. He's a South Windsor gentleman, I can't think of his name, but.
What's that? No, it's just car dealerships, car dealership, you know, like fancy rides, I know we did put a a num- we capped the number of vehicles to be seen out in the front.
Um, on fancy, yeah, yeah. E- even on this one here, there's only, display is only in the front, cause we wrote a regulation that tells you where display can happen. So when he came in to turn into a car dealership, he had to give us a compliant plan, so they won't be, it'll be along the side there, they won't be out in the front.
That fancy rides, there's there's seventeen cars out there right now, it's like, you know, I think we have ten that we are allowing.
Uh, which one now?
Fancy rides.
Okay, I can, we can take a look at that.
At least you got Revempire.
So then you also, you also went to a.
That's my nemesis.
You also went to a seminar on, um. That dealt with the definition of warehouses.
No, I mean, I'm actually on a committee that's dealing with warehouses and I just wanna tell you one thing, they're they're doing an analysis right now. About traffic from from warehouses, so they're doing a real live analysis, so I've sent them data for all these. I sent them the original Aldi's traffic data and the Aldi's data from two thousand seventeen. They're going to get real Aldi's data today and compare it to these traffic studies and be able to tell us. Where they got a target, where they ten percent off, and they're doing that for Aldi's, they're doing it for FedEx. Um, and I also gave them something along Ellington Road, so. So they're trying to ground truth, they call it, like, you know, what we're being told from a developer and, you know, how do we get the right information when it's coming through the process? So, uh, the end of this study is going to be some best practices for municipalities, it's a CROG study. Who are experiencing warehousing like Enfield, I mean, everybody is, right? So it's gonna be a series of kinds of best practices. They may wanna come talk to the commission, you're one of the commissioners that's been identified because of your history of warehouses. As as having some, you know, maybe some valuable input, so that may happen over the next year, but. There, part of what I've requested, as other planners have, is, you know, what is a warehouse and how do we? How do we better define these things so as they're coming through the process, we know what we're dealing with?
So I mean, you know, the the argument that was coming to my mind was we had to, you know, we had to approve an application because we couldn't really decide if it was a distribution center.
We knew what it was, but we couldn't.
We read the two definitions, we couldn't decide.
And 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 I don't know if at the end of the day they're gonna get any real clear than that, you know, I mean. But things like the traffic patterns, like the last mile delivery kinds of things, have certain clearly understandable traffic patterns that you wanna understand with that kind of use. So I think they're trying to to break it down as best they can.
If you're gonna get anything that would help us with that definition.
I am attending every meeting, Steve, yes. I want to desperately, trust me, I think it will be good for us.
And make a motion to adjourn, second.
All in favor?